Yeah. Yeah, I could see that. Get the other one. Don't promise anything. We'll put you on. This. Thank you. Sorry to me. Okay, so it is seven oh seven P M. If you didn't get this meeting. Called to order.
You are live and loud.
If anyone's going to remember, the comment, it knows you. I have a plan of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic or a wish of sadness. One nation under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a rather lengthy agenda today. So let's start with the meeting and the approval of minutes. Has everyone read the minutes from our meeting held on May nine?
Yes.
Yeah. And are there any changes?
No.
No. Can I have a motion then? So move. Second, second. All in favor.
I.
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 Who was the I?
Gina.
Gina.
I.
Hi Gina.
Gina.
Leanna.
Hi.
I. Say all in favor.
So it's five zero, my manager.
Five zero, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I know this is a bit unusual in terms of meeting the executive session minutes, but it came to my attention by the Swamp Scott School Committee that a complaint was filed against the Swamp Scott School Committee in regards to both of our committees meeting. And Swamp Scott sought legal counsel, as did we, and we were technically in violation of the open meeting laws because we met as a collective group. We can meet, but only one designated of the school committee and the superintendent's can meet. So moving forward, it is myself as chair, our superintendent, Swamp Scott Superintendent, and the chair of the Swamp Scott School Committee that can meet to discuss negotiations with the Swamp Scott School Committee. So the remedy that Swamp Scott, this Thursday during their meeting, they will be reading their executive session minutes. And although no one has filed a violation against the Naham School Committee, we felt that it was best to be preemptive, and I will read all of the executive session minutes that we've had regarding this matter. So I apologize because it's a lot of reading, but this is what we were instructed to do.
Ms. Kanas, before you start, can I say one thing? Just like we did have a conversation together about whether we could have that meeting of the two groups. We did not intend ever to subvert or not follow whatever the rule is about open meeting law. So we actually had a conversation, just came up with a different, potentially wrong conclusion. So I just want that as part of, you know, we didn't intend to do it.
Of course.
We tried actually.
Not the whole district trying to do anything wrong.
No, no, all of us.
Very much so.
Madam Chair, for the record, I think that's a very important thing for the people who's in Naham to understand. First of all, we were invited
Yes.
to an executive session hosted by Swamp Scott. As I put in writing to the chair, I made the assumption that they had cleared it with their attorney.
Yes.
I also reviewed the guidelines for open meetings and for executive meetings, and there seemed to be the exact language in the guidelines that covered negotiations of contracts. However, the Swamp Scott attorney believed that the word negotiation, although it doesn't say this, meant negotiations with employees, not with other school districts. Subsequently, speaking with our attorney and with the chair of the Swamp Scott School Committee, he had the opinion that there was a gap in the law, and we fell into it.
Yeah.
So, and I think that's important that everybody understands. We, we had no intention, neither the school
District.
Committee, nor the instructions. Hiding anything. We just felt similar to redo the negotiations for other types of contracts, that it was okay to meet in a second session, and evidently, the attorneys disagreed.
We don't do this, like, we don't meet with other schools. Like, we don't, because we don't talk about free speaking, going over Swamp Scott mining or whatever. Like, we don't do this. This is new ground for all of us that we're trying to dig out. For first, what's good for our kids. So, you know, little bumps along the way as we party together. And appreciate people's criticism of that. All right, sorry to interrupt you.
No, 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 so bear with me. It's just a clarification, Patty, does it need to be just you and the other chair? When we did contract negotiations for the current Swamp Scott contract, as long as it wasn't quorum, so there could be two of us.
On true.
So it doesn't just need to, if you could. I was told that they would need, it doesn't have to be me. But no, right, but it could be anybody as long as it's not a bar.
You plus.
Yeah. I don't know about the plus. I would really, like, find that out. And we did it, and then, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. As long as it's not a bar.
That's my understanding, Madam Chair. Exactly what Gina said, that as long as there's no way for the school committee to take any votes in executive session by a quorum not being present, that, I mean, for example, in my previous employment, there were eleven school committee members. So there were often three participating, or even four, in negotiations. But I read the same document you did. The attorney said, chair and superintendent. He, it may have simply been a recommendation, and it was read as what should be done. I don't know.
Well, moving on. Moving on, not so belaboring the point, here we are. So on Tuesday, April twenty seventh at six P M, a meeting was called to order. It's, the meeting was called to order. The numbers that were present for Swamp Scott were Glenn Pastor, John Giantis, Amy O'Connor, Suzanne Wright, Karen Marshall. Also present were Superintendent Angelakis and Principal Jason Calhoun. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for the negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. To conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so it declares. Okay. Michelle Bam opened with a statement that the rising sixth and fifth grade classes are small and that we would be interested in discussing options for next year. Superintendent Angelakis expressed that she believes the Naham students should come over in the fifth grade. Beth Anderson gave the history of the situation, and the initial thinking was to combine the fifth and sixth grade, but there was a lot of concern about that plan. Michelle Bam expressed that there have been a lot of conversations about the Naham Public Schools as a whole and what is best in the long term. Mr. Karen Bosie clarified that the initial conversation was to have a multi-grade classroom. The community and school isn't ready for that, but it could be among the long-term plans. We have reached out to N E S D C's to do a consultation for long-term planning. There was discussion, Amy O'Connor and Tony Perrinhausen, that when the contract was executed, it wasn't a per pupil cost. Superintendent Angelakis discussed that the model of the fifth grade class is different than the middle school model and how it's more like an elementary school model. Principal Calhoun explained the fifth grade class and the differences between the fifth and the rest of the middle school. They also get some of the benefits of the middle school. Adjournment, the motion to adjourn was made by Beth Anderson at seven forty P M, and it was seconded by Michelle Bam, all in favor of five to zero meeting adjourned. Moving on to our next meeting that we have here at the local school, just between ourselves to discuss this in order of an executive session. This meeting was called to order on Tuesday, May ninth at eight thirty P M. We read and approved the minutes from the four to five twenty twenty three executive session, and we also read and approved the minutes from the four twenty five, four twenty seven twenty twenty three executive session. We also discussed strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We reviewed the staff survey. We discussed action items that have already been implemented. We discussed action items that we can continue to work on, and we discussed getting feedback to the staff. Item four, to conduct a strategy session with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so it declares. Item A, discuss current status for the rising fifth and sixth graders and where things stand for Swamp Scott. Item B, potential responses to consider based upon Swamp Scott's response. The meeting was adjourned. A motion to adjourn was made by Michelle Bam at ten oh six P M, and it was seconded by Regina Lane, all in favor, four to zero, meeting was adjourned. And the last time we met in executive session to discuss this matter was on Tuesday, May sixteenth. The meeting was called to order at five thirty seven P M to conduct a strategy session with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so it declares. Mr. Andrews presented what a curriculum would look like if the fifth and sixth graders stayed at J E S to support social emotional development in addition to academic learning. Item B, the school committee as a group discussed the counterproposal from the Swamp Scott School Committee to send the sixth grade and or fifth and sixth grade to Swamp Scott next year. This data and the current. Item three, meeting and approval of the minutes. Item A, five nine twenty twenty three executive session nominal approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes as presented by Michelle Bam, seconded by Beth Anderson. Motion carries five to zero. Item four, strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. It was tabled to the next meeting. An adjournment motion to adjourn was made by Michelle Bam at eight oh two P M and was seconded by Beth Anderson, all in favor, a five to zero meeting was adjourned. That's enough.
Nice.
Thanks, Brad.
Nice.
Madam Chair, if I could bring up a topic for consideration by the school committee. Since the approval of these minutes was done in an executive session, and the solution to the problem was to read them publicly, my gut is telling me that perhaps the school committee should reapprove the minutes in public session. I'm not sure, it's a minor point, but why not?
Can't hurt.
It can't hurt.
I'll make the motion to approve the executive session meeting of April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three, May ninth, two thousand twenty three, and May sixteenth of two thousand twenty. I'll second the motion made by the same. All in favor?
I.
I hear you, Hannah, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for comparing with me through that very lengthy reading of the minutes. So hello, everybody, both here present and those present remotely. We greatly appreciate your participation, always encouraged.
Madam Chair, would you like me to announce the visitors tonight?
Sure.
On Zoom is what we typically do here. Ms. Lane signed in for the minutes. We have Robin iPhone, Robin Howard. We have Ruth Cobus, sixth grade teacher, Angie Vargas, second grade parent, Lauren Sherlock, fifth grade parent, Erica Von Schillgen, parent of a second and a fourth grader, Ms. Uzgatiki, parent of a sixth and a fourth grader, Leanna Delloyd, your colleague, Mark Martino, parent of a fifth grader, and Heidi Fiori, staff member and parent of a fourth grader, and Nancy Cagiano, preschool teacher and president of the N T A. I'm sorry, also Anthony Hamalary, writer for the Daily Item.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming. Okay, so I will open it up for community input and correspondence.
So, this is Leanna, I do actually have some community input. Do you want me to wait, Patty, or?
Can you repeat that, Leanna?
Oh, sorry, so I had a community member reach out to me regarding her input. She actually reached out to Gina and myself, so I was gonna read the message, but I can also wait until the end if you'd like.
Sure, it's hard to hear you, but please.
Okay. It says, "Over the last few weeks," can you hear me so far?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, "Over the last few weeks, I have had numerous conversations with parents surrounding their frustration with the quality of education for students, particularly around the special education department and rigor." She specifically offered to try and support the Johnson School in this way, and she said, "There is no reason why our students shouldn't be offered an excellent education in our small affluent community. With small class sizes, students should be offered differentiated instruction. Thank you, school committee members, for listening." And my response to her was, "Thank you for letting us know. We have our next school committee meeting on Tuesday, and we always urge families to attend and express their concerns and experiences." But I did tell her I would share her comments.
Thank you.
Yep.
Angie?
Angie Vargas? Yes, hi, thank you. Angie Vargas, Two Castle Way. I'm also the parent of a fifth grader, not just a second grader, so just wanna clarify that. Not just a second grader, so just wanna clarify that. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, thanks again for, um, everything that you, uh, all the school committee and administration are doing to try to figure out the situation for the, um, following academic year with the rising fifth and sixth graders. I appreciate it and I know that you are all trying to make, make things work. I look forward to hearing more about, um, updates later on in the agenda and thank you again for, um, your transparency and, and trying to read those minutes and all that. It wasn't as long as I expected it to be, so you did a great job, Patty. Anyway, um, looking forward to the rest of the meeting. Just wanted to say thanks again.
Thanks Angie. Thank you, Angie. That's a good question. This whole group is really trying to come up with a, a solution that will work. More than they are. I can't say we're gonna make everybody happy. I think I said that many, many weeks ago we first said, but we are really trying to figure out what the best solution is for everyone. So thank you. Everyone. Uh, Debbie?
Hello, uh, Debbie Uskati, twenty-five Spring Road. Um, thanks for reading the minutes. Um, you know, it's helpful to get a little bit of an insight, but they were still like very vague. So I think all of us parents are very much in the dark on what's going on. Like, we don't know what Swamp Scott proposed, what the school committee members in Hott are thinking. Um, we really haven't had any sort of an update for over a month. So is there anything you can share with us? I've been to all the school committee meetings, haven't gotten any update. Like, i- it's really, um, down to the wire here and would appreciate any sort of details you could share. Thank you.
Understood. And I don't want you to, I, I can imagine how people would be feeling like they're in the dark. And there is a lot that's going on currently, but it's negotiations and negotiations take a long period of time. So I will share with you, as you know, we've had several meetings with, uh, Swamp Scott. Uh, we met on four twenty-seven, but the chair and I met last Friday. And this past Monday, my gosh, that was only yesterday. It seems like it was an eternity ago. Um, the chair and I met as well as our superintendent and superintendent Angelakis and also their director of finance, Cheryl. So we met via Zoom yesterday. Um, and where we are is we are still negotiating a cost per pupil and a proposal of what that would look like. And we've been going back and forth regarding what that potential number would be. We don't have a definitive number. Um, Swamp Scott will be getting back to us. And once we have that information, I'm very happy to share it with everybody along with what we feel the best decision was.
Could I add a little bit to that, uh, Patty, I, uh, miss Paris? I, I think I. And we never wanna feel like we're, that anyone's in the dark and that there isn't transparency in the process. And I, actually, those school committee really took the feedback when parents initially came in and talked about this and felt that they were kind of caught upside and we realized that there were some things that, um, we could have asked and brought up differently during, uh, during the arc of the year, right? Around this. Also, the number of kids has been volatile. So, you know, i- it's been a moving target and my heart kind of goes out to the school trying to manage that. I think though that at the last few meetings that we've had, um, there has been an update on this every single time with whatever we felt like we could share at the time. So we did fifth and sixth update is on the business section of our agendas for the past few meetings. And while we haven't been able to share a lot, there isn't a lot actually, while there is a lot going on in negotiations, there's nothing else happening, otherwise we would share it here. So what we said the first night was that we were gonna explore this with Swamp Scott. Then we reported that Swamp Scott was willing to explore it with us. Then we were, we had to go and meet with them. We did that. We just read the minutes. Um, and now obviously we're trying to talk about the terms so that we can come back to the community and say, this is what we got and get input on that, right? We've been really clear about that in every meeting. So I appreciate, you know, I, I appreciate that there's some volatility in the experience of, um, of transparency. When one parent said we're super transparent, another parent said we're dark. But we are trying to definitely, um, go towards the transparent side as much as we possibly can in an open session meeting while we're still trying to figure everything out. So we just ask for your patience and grace, you know, and I, I definitely think all voices are important. And, um, Debbie Gladie brought that up and really, we're really trying to transparent.
I think that was really very well said.
Um, I might be.
Yeah.
Sean Roberts, uh, Seventeen Island Road.
Right.
I might be oversimplifying this.
Yeah.
But with the cost per pupil, isn't there something already established for our seventh graders that are, that go to the school system?
So we have an agreement currently in place for grades seven through twelve. That would not cover this.
I understand wouldn't cover, but you would have a, a cost per pupil kind of at least ballpark that you could be sharing with, with somebody and, you know, you could be working on off that. Start, at least a starting point.
Trust me, we've been going back and forth in terms of numbers. Um, so we have gone through multiple iterations of what that potentially could be. The way that that, um, contract was not negotiated based on a cost per pupil. That wasn't the basis for it. So it's a five-year agreement. It's approximately eight point five million dollars. Um, and it's capped. This is completely different, um, where, where they do not want to incorporate this into the existing agreement. Um, they have to answer to the community of Swamp Scott and to the taxpayer of Swamp Scott. So if they were to accept our kids, well, they have to make sure that the community of Swamp Scott, that's a important decision.
Is there, is there any other options? Like, another, another school, another school district? You know, either, and are we talking to them?
Yeah.
No.
Is there any other options, like another school district?
No.
For, I, I, I'm just talking for these current fifth and sixth graders.
Um, just a point of process, even though this feels awkward, uh, feels awkward to me, but it is a point of process to, for public comment. Um, and I was the first one to break the rules, so I apologize. I should know, we are to hear public comment and not respond.
Okay.
Um, and then we're supposed to use that to come back and tell everybody what's going on. So Sean, I think if you read the comments as comments and then we listen and we'll take them and then we know what people are thinking and the, the batch. I don't know who made these rules, but I was supposed to follow.
And I'm so sorry.
No, no.
See, I'm terrible at that because that's not my nature.
And it is, I start, I say, I think, and it was my fault. I've had to, I feel, I'm in trouble. Okay.
Patty, can I just ask Mary West, two eighty-seven Non-Hot Road? Can I just ask what the options are to at some point when you're done? Is it fifth, sixth incoming, one or the other or both? Isn't sort of what's the combination of options? So, or is it just all or nothing? So again, yeah, don't have to answer right now.
I will not answer right now. I will take that undecided. Thank you. Thanks. Mark Martino from, uh, Jim and the Black Sixteen. Mark.
Hi, everybody. Um, I just wanna say thank you to the school committee for hearing us, um, and pursuing this with Swamp Scott. And, um, I just wanna reassure, like, I understand completely why you can't share, why you can't, what you can't share. Um, and it's, you know, having been on the inside of that, it's, i- i- it, it does feel like a, a lack of transparency. But I think, you know, I appreciate you engaging in a dialogue with Swamp Scott. It shows good faith that is, you know, commitment to what you stated as our commitment as a community. The best option being to have our students, uh, attend Swamp Scott. And, you know, unfortunately, I, I feel, I feel everybody's frustration with that. We wanna know where we're at with the negotiations. Um, but also, you know, having been part of negotiations, just wanna reassure people, they, they can't tell us a lot. Um, and that's, you know, we, we have an elected school committee that we elect and therefore trust. Um, and we're putting our faith in them to negotiate this on best, uh, what's best for our kids. Um, so I just wanna say thank you for, for doing what you're doing. Um, I, I appreciate it and I hope that we can work something out with Swamp Scott. Uh, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate it. And now we're on, we're back, coming in the chat from Debbie. Um, I don't think we have an update last week. We're waiting for response from Swamp Scott.
Yeah. Yeah.
With his hand.
Sean Roberts, Seventeen Island Road, also again. So I will, I have notes here and they're all framed in the form of questions, so I gotta kind of, so I have a little bit of history with the new Swamp Scott Elementary School. I've been involved with the construction of that, that school on a, um, earthmoving. Um, but I have seen the school, I've seen it, you know, the, the steel going up. It's gonna be a very impressive building. It's gonna be state of the art. I've actually reached out to, um, Glenn Pastor over at Swamp Scott. And he kinda gave me kind of framework of what the school is gonna be like. That school's gonna be K through, K through four. Um, the middle school's gonna continue to be five through, seven, or five through eight. Um, my personal feeling is especially because the, their model changes. Once they get into the sixth grade, I think the town should seriously look at sending our students in sixth grade. Um, rather than seventh grade because it is, they're, they're, they're far behind, I think socially. And, you know, having that, they're getting thrust into a, into a situation where the, their counterparts in Swamp Scott have a leg up on them. And, you know, with going to different classes and, and just having that model where I think our students in the seventh grade, they're, might be lost. Some students might be lost. Um, my, my kids haven't reached that age yet. Um, we'll see how things work. Um. And the, one of my other personal feelings is, is actually, I mean, definitely in the sixth grade. I also think that we should seriously consider looking at going to the new elementary school right from kindergarten or first grade. Uh, that's my own personal opinion. It's, like I said, state of the art school. It's gonna have full-time staff. That staff around here, we might only have part-time. And the students will be, they'll be integrated. I think, I think socially, it's good for the kids to, um, to get to know other kids. Um, I know my son has thrived getting to know kids from Swamp Scott, uh, through the Little League programs. Since the Little League programs have merged, um. Another thing, another frustrating thing I, I found is because my son's class had two, had two classes in it. It always seems like there's a teacher chase. They're always chasing a teacher for that grade. You know, because the year before only has one teacher and now all of a sudden now they gotta have a second teacher. You know, it happened, you know, and then there's a potential that you might end up with the same teacher. Cause that teacher might move up with kindergarten, first grade. And that's great if the teacher, if the teacher works and works well with your, your student. But on the other, on the other side, if they don't work well together, whether it's teaching style or just something doesn't click, you're stuck. You're, you're, and you're stuck for two whole years. Uh, and I, and I think that, you know, with this teacher chase, there's no stability. You know, one year the teacher might be, might be third grade, next year they're kindergarten, next year, who knows where they are. And the, a teaching style of third grade might not work for a teaching style of kindergarten. Uh, you know, in, there, there becomes a level of frustration with that. Um. And, and actually, um, I have no other way of, of saying this other than a question, but, um, and I kinda think I know the answer to this, but who actually ultimately makes the decision for, or going to Swamp Scott either, you know, K through, K through eight or, or what have you. And you don't have to answer that. I, I think I know the answer, probably a vote from you guys. I don't know, I don't know if it goes to a town vote at a town meeting or, or something like that. Not sure. So. That's my, my two cents for today.
Does anyone else have any comments? Anyone that's here? Well, I'm wondering if we should be moving the agenda item up once, since we are discussing the plans for grades five and six.
You wanna end, um, public comment?
Yes. Okay, absolutely. So at this time I will end public comment unless someone has a burning thought, question. But can I have a motion to move, um, item seven A on the agenda?
Oh, I know what you're doing, seven A, um, uh, up on the agenda right now.
Oh, second. All in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Okay.
Aye.
I, yeah, I've forgotten. Okay, so what can I say in regards to Mary's question and what the options are that we're looking at? So we're looking at many different options and we're getting as much input as possible. We're looking at sending grade six over. We're looking at sending grades five and six over. We're looking at having grades five and six here. So we're looking at the whole scope of possibilities. And I'm being very open, being very transparent. We're trying to get the pros and cons from everybody. And today we solicited, um, input from the teachers here that are currently teaching grades four, five and six in terms of their thoughts, um, regarding the pros and the cons of teaching small class sizes. So we're trying to get all, all of the information so that we can make a new decision. In regards to your question. Um, such a drastic change that you're proposing, that would be a community-wide decision. That would have to be approved in a town meeting. We would certainly never as a committee, um, even vote to shut down a single grade. Whatever the decision is, it would not be permanent. So if we made the decision that we would move grade six over, it would be for this school year. And this school year only because of extenuating circumstances. It wouldn't be a permanent, grade six is gonna move over to Swamp Scott. I would never feel comfortable and I don't think anyone here would ever feel comfortable making that decision without soliciting the input of every parent and guardian in our entire community.
Yeah, Justin, can I add to that for a second? I think, I think it is, legally it is our decision, both short and long term. I think what you're getting at is that we right now are getting input, um, on the short-term decision and we all feel under the gun, because of the numbers. Long-term, we would have some kind of a huge community process of input to give us input on, on any of the options that might be available, um, to us. Right now, the only options that are coming up heavy that we've been asked to consider is, are about the fifth and sixth grade. Um, and so that doesn't mean people can't bring other options that we might consider. But right now that is the focus of our work is what is the short and long-term solution? First for these rising fifth and rising sixth. And then long-term for the school in terms of fifth and sixth grade. And, um, that would, we get a lot of input. But at the end of the day, in the democratic process that we've got here, it's, it's, we would make the decision because you've empowered us through electing us, as Mark was talking about, um, to, uh, make these decisions. But ethically, we would not do that without a whole lot of transparency and input in the community about those processes, right? So back to what you were saying, right now we're working on the short-term, this and six.
Okay. She, she's so awkward. She really is. I do have the idea when. Yes, I, I, I do. So I anticipate, I know that Swamp Scott will be meeting on Thursday. Okay. Um, they should be getting back to me in regards to what they're proposing that evening or Friday. Um, they should be getting back to me in regards to what they're proposing, that evening or Friday. And so what I anticipate is sometime next week. That we'll have a special meeting. That we'll call, that everybody is welcome to. That will be publicly posted, that we invite all of you to. And it will be a special meeting, and that will be me only, I can. And we will make some decisions. Okay, great, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, if I may. Um, Mr. Roberts brings up. Large change. Just call it that. And Nahad.
Small and large.
And Nahad is not the decision-maker in the public. I wanna be clear. If everybody in Nahad wanted their children to go K eight. Or K six. K twelve to Swamp Scott. You don't, we don't have the authority to do that, that has to go through the D E S C, probably has to go through the legislature. Also, because Swamp Scott would then become a regional school district. It's a huge change. It would mean contracts, it would mean, um. Possible land swaps, uh, because if. The elementary students were to continue to go into this building. Rather than that building. Uh, the new building in Swamp Scott, there's one set of legal documents. If the Nahad students would go to the new building in Swamp Scott, that's another whole set. So that, my guess would be that's a multi-year. Process. That, um. Involves a lot of people, including the legal department of the state. Because. My guess is they probably could decide that the town in Nahad could simply continue to tuition kids in. But just tuition K twelve, my guess is that's not going to be the decision, they would. Want a regional school district, which has some positives. And it has some negatives. Um. That being a very, you know, a long-term process. Uh, so I just wanted that to be. Really as crystal clear as it could, uh, but I. I would support looking into it. As, um. Item eight F on the agenda. Uh, there's a document in your packet, uh, about a, a long-term look. For, uh, by a consultant.
Yep.
So, it's. It certainly is. Um. Worthy of a discussion. Obviously, I can imagine that people are not unified in that matter.
I, I would think not, yeah, I, I, I would really think so, there's such long-term implications of. Of that decision, or to the community.
And we've heard, you know, we've heard here, a lot of people, a lot of different people appreciate all the input. And some folks, um, have been like, don't change a thing, don't touch a thing. Don't touch the glasses, don't do it. And, uh, and often bring up the specialness of the Johnson Elementary School. Other folks, um, are calling or saying that the shifting, um, times are calling for some people in brackets, so. Um, there have not been a lot, I have not heard a lot of folks bring, I've heard a little bit, but not a lot of people bring up the idea of, um. A size would change, which that would be, um, the idea of like, um, having a regional school system. Um, with kids potentially all going to Swamp Scott. But, um, I think there has been a lot of thought about, most of the thought right now is about these particular classes. And a lot of parents of those classes, um, with a lot on the line, really voicing their concerns about what happens with these classes. So I think it is good that the majority of our energy has been spent on that, um, and we are not ignoring the fact that we need to look to the future. Um, and, uh, and keep everybody along with us, maybe. The time we have today.
We are, guys, it's not easy to ask by any means, so, thank you for very well.
And I just have a clarifying question.
Well, and that's the, that we, it is, we need to. Part of my wish is over.
Yes. Sorry.
And we checked three times for that.
But please, don't, don't run off, feel free to stay for the rest. So moving on to the super. Well, we escaped the examination and authorization for the theme of the bills.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um. In your packet, you have the details list of bills totaling seventy-two thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-one cents. I believe, uh, the, needs one more signature. Um. Very typical bills, one general education bus, uh, bill. Um. A lot of, of. Utilities, food. And special education, uh, costs. So Madam Chair, I respectfully ask a member of the school committee to make a motion. To approve the expenditure of seventy-two thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars, forty-one cents. For the, uh, May twenty-third bill launch.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the bill payments. For the amount of seventeen, seventy-two thousand dollars, one hundred and ninety-four, forty-one cents.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now we can move on to the super.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the first thing I'm gonna do is defer to the principal for the principal.
Thank you, Superintendent Parentozzi, Madam Chair, uh, I'm happy to share my report here for this evening. Uh, in the area of teaching and learning, we've had a number of guests invited to the school to share their careers. Uh, I believe this came about as a result of the superintendent's encouragement to invite community members and guests, um. To, to share something that they have to offer. Uh, Ms. Fidero's fiance is a scientist engineer at Boston Dynamics, and they had Spot come in, one of the robotic dogs. Uh, visited with, uh, several classes in the gymnasium, and we had a one presentation about how you can apply. Uh, what you learn in school to making a really, uh, cool robot. Uh, so that was, that was fun for all the adults and the, and the students to see. So thank you to Ms. Fidero and for her significant other for that visit. Uh, Ms. Antrim is gonna be sponsoring a visit from her sister, who works at Google, and is a programmer. Um, and, um, and also, uh, her sister's fiance, who's a, who's a game programmer. And so they're gonna be coming in, teaching some students about Scratch. Which is a programming, uh, language for elementary students. And then we have Ms. Reidmacher, uh, inviting her husband in, and he is a PhD at Northeastern. And he's researching underwater sounds, and he's gonna teach about waves and sound. Um, using some of the props and, and devices that we have at the school, and also some of his information and knowledge of underwater noises. So, uh, it's exciting to see, uh, you know, several teachers inviting family in to share their expertise. Now, in the area of music, I wanna let you know that we're continuing to improve our program. Uh, Mr. Bullock is with the, the support of NEF, has ordered several marching drums. Uh, cymbals, bells, shakers. Uh, tambourines that students are gonna be using in the concert and upcoming, as well as in our parade this Monday. And so I wanna thank NEF for their support and Mr. Bullock's, uh, unwavering enthusiasm. For music education and the real wonderful way that he's taken the, you know, taken the reins with this area. Gotten so many of our instruments repaired, and will be integrating them into our program. This Friday, we have professional development day. And this will be a real collaborative opportunity for teachers to meet with their grade level or approximate grade level peers. Talk about what writing looks like in a classroom. This is one of the things that we learned that the teachers are interested in doing is, um, getting together more with their colleagues and. Looking at student work, which I think is a, a great way to do that. Uh, so we're gonna focus on writing, and we're also gonna have our committees meet, uh, to continue to plan for the coming school year. And again, this is an effort to get more input into, um, the decision-making process of the Johnson School. Today, we had a fourth and fifth grade field trip to, uh, a nearby beach with, uh, Northeastern University. And so we appreciate their continued collaboration, and Ms. Reidmacher was able to organize that as soon as we walk over to the beach and, um. Learn some content from Northeastern there. And we're also getting our sixth graders ready for their transition to the middle school. So we had Mr. Kalishman come out to the school, today we had the sixth graders take the middle school bus. Well, take a Healy bus, it's our middle school bus, over to the middle school, along the way they look at the stops that we have. And also went over the bus rules, so all the students have been given a copy of the rules and expectations, and also your policies about bus behavior. And they also have a schedule that we give out, uh, that we have on our website about where their bus stops are. So they feel comfortable. And, uh, I had one student say, strangers, do we have to get on the bus in the morning? Is that how we're getting to the middle school? They thought I was actually telling them to get on the bus stop, it's at fifteen to get over to the middle school, so they feel good. I thought that was a great idea, I said, that's how we're gonna do it.
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly, go up there, we don't have to hire a second bus, get on the bus that's already heading that way. But now I, I assured them that we're gonna have a, have a, learn about it first. And so I, I just wanna thank the Swamp Scott community for being so welcoming, and Mr. Kalishman for his time in making this transition smooth. I think the way he spoke with the students really, uh, put them in ease, and they, I think they're gonna be in a great position, uh, when they join the middle school. Uh, in community, in the area of community enrichment, I wanna announce that we're having a native plants and garden tour, uh, throughout all of Nahad. We are, the site for the organization of this event is on July eighth. So about thirty families, thirty, uh, residents, rather, have opened up their. Their gardens to, uh, the residents of Nahad to learn about native plants, and as you know, we've been working a lot with this, Brandy on this around the school. So it'll be an opportunity for her to share the work that the students and she have been doing, and teach folks about what you can do with native plants. And then finally, we had our Gaddys Burger Express last week, that was on Friday. Uh, we had Mr. David Conlin, Ms. Anna Manzano, both veterans, helping with the judging. And we also had Julie Tarmi, the director of, the executive director, rather, of the Historic Society, also helping the judging. It was a lovely event, and. I'm happy to announce that Ione Byam Miller, uh, was selected as the personal recite, the Gaddysburg.
Don't even announce, I can put that in the memo.
Please do, please do.
Yes.
It's been announced, and it's in fact, and in fact, it was covered by the Daily Item.
That's great.
So they came out, we got a front page on Saturday for that. And, um. Gray Palmer is the understudy. So we have a second person, just in case that something happens with Ione, not able to make it. Uh, Gray is ready to step into that place.
Wonderful.
And that was wonderful, uh, to see there as well. And, um, that's related to my upcoming event that I have on May twenty-ninth. There's several others that, uh, we have in our packet for end of the year, but, uh, this is on Monday. Uh, the band going marching, uh, Mr. Bullock got approval for a vehicle. In case anybody has a hard time cut, uh, carrying their drum or need the break. We also have parents involved this year in the parade, so we're gonna have someone playing the, um. The cymbals, uh, I believe Mr. Bullock's family will be involved in terms of playing the marching drums, because we don't have a student for that just yet. Um, and looking forward to, um, participating.
Ms. Brandy, uh, after school today, the band was practicing marching round, it was awesome. It was so fun to watch.
Great.
Yeah. It was really cool.
Thank you for sharing that, Ms. Lane, I knew they were gonna be doing that, and, um, as I said, Mr. Bullock's really focused on it, and. Um, I think we'll be, uh, happy to see this, and also our spring concert, that'll be coming up on, uh, June ninth.
Wonderful, thank you so much, this is really wonderful things for Nahad.
Glad to be part of it.
So moving to facilities, not so excited, but.
Not so exciting, I get the non-exciting part. Uh, actually, I would be remiss if I didn't say, uh, thank you to Mr. Andrews. The, you know, you, he reads this list of activities real quickly. And, uh, I wanna make sure the members of the community and the school committee just remember how many hours ago to plan something. And, uh, besides doing the, the obvious, um. Job of being the head of the school, so thank you. Um, it is a great rain, I remember at the beginning of the year, I said, back to normal. And with. With Mr. Andrews' leadership, we're getting there, and the rest of the staff, every one of the staff members is really on board with this, too, so it's great.
Can I remark on something in there, um, Mr. Parentozzi, that, that. They, the desire for teachers to reach out to external folks, whether it's folks in their own family, or like friends, or what have you. For some of us, like, that takes, and, and, A, there has to be a landscape for that, you provide that for them, but that's okay. And along with you, Mr. Parentozzi, and, and I think like, it's so good for them, it's so good to have external. People come in and be part of the, the, the ecosystem of the school, like it's, it's, it really enhances the entire thing. Amazing grow, and Ryan was so excited about this robotic dog, and he'd already seen the robotic dog. At the Museum of Science, but the fact that it was Ms. Fidero's. You know, uh, future husband bringing in the dog, like, it was another whole layer of excitement, and it was amazing as a parent to just watch that. And looking at this list of like, so many teachers taking the time to bring that in, and they could just, you know, stick with the try and show, I just really appreciate that. Thank you for looking up.
Thank you. So the facility, uh, report is really boring, uh. The H back to the phones, uh, the bills are paid, and everything's working. We're still waiting for a repeater and the alarm, and I wanna remind you that you approved that payment, but I have not authorized it, no. You authorized it, I didn't approve it yet, because we still have pieces of the alarm system that need to be installed. Uh, we have a dead tree out, um, down by D P W, which we will be taking down, and I wanted you to know, but it's absolutely dead. What we're going to be doing is, um. Cutting the tree down about eight feet above the ground where the first branch has come off. So that it can be a host for many organisms for a while. Uh, there's a word for that.
Snag.
Snag?
Yeah, it's called a snag.
A snag.
A big dead tree.
It's called a snag. Does a snag stand for something?
Uh, no, it doesn't, I'm sure you, no, it's, um, just the, the name that we call, uh, a dead tree that woodpeckers and insects move into.
I learned something new.
Yeah, I said.
Welcome to the club, I'll tell you.
Yes.
I usually try to keep those critters away from my house. Uh, and I will be contacting the D P W's director, uh, Zach and I will be talking about painting, which we've been waiting for, for a while. Uh, our, uh, lines and all the things on the roadways to, uh, make sure that we're safe. The crossing, uh. Areas, they really need to be redone badly, but. Um, that will be done after all of the town repaving is done. Okay? So. Lost in space. Six C, the wellness committee report. Uh, I want you to know that, uh, you have a wellness council. Persistent, uh, consistent with your school committee policy, the wellness policy. The council, um. Which is a committee of myself, the principal, our health and physical education teacher, our food service director. Our counselor, our school nurse. And a parent, guardian, uh, and school committee member who's also a, a nutritionist. Um, had, we have met, now, not everybody's, has been able to make all the meetings, but we have met already. On March twenty-eighth, April fourth, and May sixteenth. We will meet for the final time on May thirtieth. At that meeting, we will finalize our amendment recommendations to the policy. And there are about twelve of them. So what I will do then this summer, is along with the other policy amendments, I'll work with Chris, and we'll write the amendments into a policy. Uh, for your, uh. Perusal and consideration. I'm not sure. No one may have been on the committee when we did the last policy review. So what I, so let me explain what I'll do, is I'll take the policy. And I'll add language. And separate it somehow, that Chris usually recommends to me, either bolding the new language, or bolding the old language, and italicizing the new language. So when the school committee gets the policy recommendation from me, you can clearly see. The old policy versus the new policy language. There are times when the. Language changes that are recommended by your association, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Are so large, I don't do it that way, I simply, here's, here's the old policy, and here's the new policy. Because, you know, eighty percent of it's different. So rather than confuse the issue. Uh, I, I'll do it that way. So the wellness policy, uh, is one that we are required to review every three years, most of your policies are not like that. So, um, that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention, to let you know that we are. So um that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention, to let you know that we are in the process of doing it. And we are very close to the culmination.
So is that, is the wellness policy a Nahad public schools thing or is it a Dusse requirement for all school districts?
It's a state requirement for funding for your food service department over here. It's a requirement of the public health, and I think that's state. So what we're doing meets like four different requirements sometimes. When we get audited, for example, when the food service audit happens, they ask for a wellness policy. For our grant, the health grant that we get from from the public health department, they ask for a copy of our wellness policy. It's really up to date. We have used a um a procedure called Well Stat three point zero. What it means is that there is a group federally that takes wellness and says, as an example, if you have a good wellness policy, it will say A, B, and C about physical activity. Now ours already says A, B, and C. But the Wellness three point O gives us language increments. This meets the policy. This is really good. This exceeds the policy, and we're aiming for that exceeding the policy all the time. I have that if you would like to talk to it.
I would. I think that probably doesn't happen at the level that I would want to.
Okay. So I wanted you to know that we're actively involved in upgrading that. In addition, in my policy file, I have probably fifteen policies that have been slightly amended uh that I will be bringing to you, and I promise I won't bring them all at once.
Thank you. That's appreciated.
And Madam Chair, uh the fiscal twenty-three budget update. We have already paid the large bills, the HVAC, which was, as you remember, over fifty-two thousand dollars. The um phone bells and clocks, which was over forty thousand. And we have, you have authorized the payment of the uh alarm system. Uh with all that, we are close to being right on budget. And if we are not, then we have journal entry possibilities that you don't see. I handle that. So for example, uh a journal entry would be something like this. Our our self-funded early childhood program puts ten thousand dollars into our building maintenance account because they use the building. That's a journal entry. That happens between the accountant, the town accountant and myself. So we have some of those that are happening. Some already have happened, some will happen. And then we have transfers. So you moved you your meeting um from um two in June, so you have two meetings within a week. So one of those meetings, I'll make a real quick one that will be focused on journal uh excuse me, on transfers and of course the fifth and sixth grade. And I'll try to lighten up the agenda. Because we have a meeting on the thirteenth and because the meeting on the twentieth has a three-day weekend, I have to post that on the fifteenth. So two days after the the first meeting in June, we have to post the second meeting in June. So that's the one I'll probably make uh the transfers and uh whatever you have for the fifth and sixth grade by that time. Okay? And the budget update is a good one. And I have something to say about our budget later uh in the agenda, and I'll hold that if I may, Madam Chair. Rolling very long, seven A, you've already done, I believe, this item, this fifth and sixth grade plans update. Town meeting. I would like to um congratulate the school committee for its budget. Uh it was accepted and passed the town meeting without comment or hold. I also think the school committee and and others in the district, for example, the principal and Chris should hear this, that in on page five of the um report and recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee of the Town of Bahad, the following sentence was written. Quote, another year of a well-managed school budget, period. This year's budget includes replacing the heating and air conditioning system in the cafeteria, accomplished without borrowing. So um it's being recognized by the finance committee, so you're you're, you know, that's one of your big responsibilities as an elected committee is financial oversight. So congratulations on it.
Congratulations, Steve.
Yes, credit, we're credited. Yeah, you're very diligent in your work in getting us, keeping us on budget, but even still being so um attentive to bills and um accept the cost and you know, uh even though sometimes you might go a little bit over and trying to do work yourself, which we have to stop you.
Our superintendent.
On the roof. Yeah, yeah, um I think, you know, all of us is credit here. I appreciate it of those.
Thank you very much. However, as we all know, in addition to myself, if something went wrong, since there's no business official here who's usually the fall person, it would be me as superintendent, but it always reflects on the school committee, so.
I appreciate it.
When school districts have financial issues, school committees are typically blamed by the population, so my congratulations is a sincere one. To be recognized by the finance committee publicly in writing like that is a big, in my opinion. So Madam Chair, moving on from patting ourselves on the back, uh let's go to the school committee meeting dates. Uh last meeting, I presented those to you. You asked me to amend them by having one meeting in July and one meeting in August, which I have done, so uh item seven C is the meetings draft for next year, which would need uh your approval.
And the meeting in August is the first day of school, right?
Yes.
And that's okay?
Yes. And uh Madam Chair, if I may explain, that is okay because of the new business A, B, and number E, A, B, and C. You are gonna authorize me to take care of business when you're not meeting.
And we also discussed the last meeting that with the change in dates, um if we felt the need to have another right prior, then we can add one with proper notice.
Absolutely.
So that said, do I have a motion? I'm making a a a motion to refer the school committee meeting uh a um dates for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. One second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, uh members of the committee and Madam Chair. Uh item seven D, uh the school committee meeting on the twenty-seventh is officially canceled. And um the school committee meeting on the twentieth has been scheduled in June.
Hey Siri, enter com.
You, your microphone. So whoever wants to talk to Siri.
Item uh seven F, Madam Chair, the summer programs. Uh we have forty-three students registered our summer enrichment program. Today, I was informed by the Commissioner of Education that they are funding the um acceleration academies again. That is a competitive bid. I have asked the principal the, our special education director, if they want me to do the paperwork for it. Um I haven't got an answer. I I just did that late this afternoon. So we may in fact have another one week right before school starts, academy for students. Uh but that has not been determined yet. Uh but this is the one that starts on on July tenth and goes to August third. This is a combination of our special education program and our general education program. And um I know there was a there was a commentary uh earlier in the meeting about special education. When I got here, our special education program in the summer was basically um one hour a day, one day a week for four weeks. And we have expanded that to three hours a day for four days a week for four weeks. So we've really expanded that program. We also just went through a special education audit and we came through it, if you remember, I showed you the paperwork, you know, without negative comment. So um we are typically, we are really meeting all of our requirements and exceeding most. So I think that's important for you to realize. There will be three levels of the summer program, kindergarten and first grade, there's eighteen students. Uh grade two, there's fifteen just in grade two, so we're gonna have a special grade two program. And grades three through six, we have ten students, and we have a variety of individuals who'll be working with them, including a high school experience of retired teacher, so our older students will get a lot of good academia. Each week, though, will be a theme, science, writing, reading, and math. And uh students are gonna be asked to pack a snack, water, and have sunscreen. And uh obviously, parents will get a lot more detailed information as that comes, but they already know about the summer program because the principal has communicated with them.
Right, that's great. End of the year activities.
End of the year activities, or the item seven G.
And there are many.
And there are many. And once again, I think uh Mr. Andrews should be really be given the large loud kudos for all of the activities this year that were are getting us back to where we are were. Our work. Item seven H in your packet is the pre-K preliminary numbers. This is a little disappointing um at this point, and we're not quite sure why. We only have eighteen students signed on. We believe there's two more in process for twenty. Uh so I don't know if you've noticed, but the uh electronic sign. So uh we thought that a a way to remind parents and guardians that they want to participate in our preschool program is to uh to put on the electronic sign. So we're hopeful of that uh that number will grow. Uh I also spoke to the preschool teachers this morning, and they are going to remind all of their students who are not going to kindergarten that they have to re, they have to tell us to come back. And I think that's part of the issue. You know, I'm here for my three to four-year-old, and I'm gonna be here for my four- to five-year-old. So everybody knows it, but you still have to officially do it.
Madam Chair, and Superintendent Karen, can I add to that a bit? Uh we also have in, in the past, we've just mostly had a lot of enrollment in the summer.
Yeah.
Uh and so we're trying to really plan ahead more now, especially how hard it is to hire folks. So um so that's a change. Uh but we did send out a hard copy letter, uh a second mailing we did to remind folks, to ask folks to get their paperwork in by June first. Um and so that it's a bit of a change, so I don't know if that has anything to do with it. But we have done two things to really push it.
Mr. Andrews, what's the difference between this time, like in prior years, in terms of enrollments?
Oh, you know, um high, high thirties, two thousand twenty-two was our apex. Yeah.
We would have high thirties.
Oh, by this time, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. No, uh-huh, no. We don't know.
We don't, yeah, we wouldn't even be asking for it yet. I mean, we wouldn't.
I'm just reflecting, you said this is surprising that it's low, so I wondered like.
No, the fact is, we're asking earlier, there's no question.
Okay.
But I still would have expected, uh today with my discussion with the uh early childhood teachers, there's a significant number of parents who haven't told us they're coming back, and we we know that, we and you're pretty sure they are. And we would have hoped that they would just send, well, they have to send an email response, but you know, everybody gets so many emails nowadays, it's tough.
There's thirty-eight students on the census for that are eligible for preschool.
I was just gonna ask that question.
Thirty-eight.
Yeah.
So, but we only get sixty in three-year-olds, sixty percent of three-year-olds and seventy-five percent of four-year-olds, so you know, we're not expecting thirty-eight.
Yeah, we're still the one of the lowest costs by hour and by total daycare available.
Oh, yes, I know. Um and I'm I'm sorry that I if I missed this date already, but I remember back in the day, uh there was a night for preschool. I have to introduce, and that's came and gone. All right, Michelle.
And during that night, you used to ask for people to get their paperwork in by February first or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was early.
I also want to remind all of us, there are no deadlines.
Right.
Nobody gets excluded except for we're maxed out. So, I mean, and that may in fact be one of the issues. I mean, you know, we're very flexible and people know that. You know, other, other preschools, I mean, when they put a deadline on, it's typically a hard deadline with a huge deposit required. And we try to be a little more sensitive to the uh financial pressures and time pressures that parents and guardians have.
Can I ask a quick question? It's Leanna. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can hear me.
Okay, sorry. So um just the page before, page eleven, just to clarify, is MCAS makeup? This is, I think, for Mr. Andrews. Is MCAS makeup for grades other than grade five Thursday? I'm wondering about sixth grade MCAS makeup.
Uh so Madam Chair, through you, we're going to do a makeup, well, we do, we will do a makeup session tomorrow and we'll do one Thursday as well.
Okay.
And I think we had that date on there because that's the deadline for makeups.
Okay.
But, yep, but we'll be doing, um, we do them as soon as we can. It's more of a rolling process. And when Connor Deloitte will have his test tomorrow.
Thank you. I I'm sending him to bed.
I was just gonna say, make sure he gets rested or hydrated.
That's why I'm asking. I'm like, okay, thank you.
I communicated that with Ruth. I thought she maybe got it to you, but maybe not. So thank you for the question.
Thank you. Yes, she did. Thank you.
Okay.
So that was a great point. Thank you. I get a little OCD every once in a while, like all the time. So Madam Chair, going to new business. Um Madam Chair, would you like me to read these because of your voice?
No, it's emotions.
Yeah, the motions.
The motions.
If you'd like us to read the motions.
Wendy's gonna make.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Um so item A is the authorization that we do annually for summer months because there are things that occur during the summer that if they waited for you to have a meeting, it would delay them, or I would have to call the chair and ask you to come off of whatever beach you're on, and I don't want to do that either, so.
You'll have to track me in Italy.
Oh, I'll go get you.
Um, let me make a motion. I'll make a motion uh to offer as superintendent to act on school committee's behalf to, A, extend from FY twenty-four salaries account funds for payment of salaries personnel under all federal grants beginning in September. B, expand from the FY two thousand and twenty-four salaries account funds for payment of salaries of personnel as detailed in the FY twenty-four budget. C, use of salaries account in school operations account funds to pay encumbrances and salaries for summer programs. C, use of salaries account in school operations account funds to pay encumbrances and salaries for summer programs. D, authorize and or reauthorize school department revolving accounts. To accept all monies received by the school committee in connection with the conduct of said revolving accounts. According to the purposes of the program programs for which receipts. E, accept all state and federal grant funds awarded through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And the Department of Early Education Care. And to authorize the establishment of separate grant accounts. That may be expended by the school committee without further appropriation. For the purposes designated in each grant proposal. F, to authorize the superintendent to act on the school committee's behalf to pay bills. On the school department accounts for which commitments have been made by bid or purchase order and must be paid for their payments. The bills will be ratified by the school committee at the first meeting following payment.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm, I'll make a motion to. Um. For the acceptance of this fiscal year twenty twenty-four grant funds. Uh to accept all federal entitlement continuation grants and all state continuation grants awarded to the the Hahn public schools. During fiscal year twenty twenty-four and to authorize establishment. Of separate grant accounts that may be expended by the school committee without further appropriation. For the purposes designated in each grant proposal.
Do I have a second? Oh, I guess. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And eight C, participation in national school lunch and breakfast program. I'll make a motion to participate in the national school lunch and breakfast program and the community food distribution program. In conforming with requirements of the state Bureau of Nutrition, Education and the School Food Services for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Do I have a second? A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, it's way more fun talking about the robot dog.
Okay, so.
Madam Chair, item eight D, if I may, is simply the uh. School committee members for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh. The officers and contact information. Uh item eight C. Uh excuse me, eight E. Um. As you know, from past experience, the NEC requires a member of the. Each of its member districts to have a board representatives. And on this board, the superintendence of the school district served. So uh. With all due humility, I respectfully ask the member of the school committee to. Uh make a motion to appoint the superintendent uh here in the Hahn as the. NEC member representing the Hahn for the NEC Board of Directors.
I'll make a motion for um Tony Parentos, the uh representative of the Hahn Public Schools. To represent the Hahn Public Schools on Board of Directors for NEC.
Do I have a second? Yes, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
Thank you. And Madam, item eight F is the Nezbec proposal that I mentioned to you uh. By email, I believe.
I'm.
That I was requesting, I I probably said it last meeting too. Um. Nezbec, the New England School Development Council, is a. Very well-respected organization. So uh I know this is only half of what you wanted.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say, I think that we were looking for.
And I'm talking to them about the other half because that's not typically what they do.
It isn't.
No.
So would they?
And in my conversations with the representative of Nezbec, one of which I've known for twenty years. Um. They're not sure anybody does that because how you arrange your school district. Is often done simply by space that you have and buildings that you have as compared to. An educational decision based on research. That's broad enough to be global. I don't know how else to say. Uh as you know, I've been in the business since nineteen sixty-seven. And I've been in K eight buildings with a four-year high school, I've been in. Buildings where there's a primary school with just K one, two, and then. Um. My, my first superintendency. Three through twelve was in another building. Clearly separated dramatically, but in a big building. Uh here, we obviously have K six. Uh in Swamp Scott, it's K four and and then um. You know, five through twelve. I, I'm not sure how to go about determining. Which one would be the best in terms of education, but where I will continue to speak with them, uh the um. The new director of Nezbec, Dave Rusi, like I said, I've known him for years.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he and I will continue to talk about it. This is simply a proposal. To project. The number of students that will be going to. Our schools and the Swamp Scott schools for the next number of years. And for that, they won three thousand three hundred dollars. With that, we get an annual membership that typically costs us fourteen hundred ninety dollars. So there's two ways of looking at it, we're not a member typically because we don't have the kind of. Decisions that are typically made by a larger school district, you know, an urban district. All urban districts on Nezbec every year. Because they have to keep their eye on, you know, three hundred new students or, you know. What does that mean for all the elementary schools you have? Uh we don't have that issue, so we have not historically been a member. But um, there are um. Value, there is a value to being a member. And that would be, we get discounts if we ask them to do something else. Um. We get free special education trend report services. Uh free access to Title Nine self-assessment inventories, we get a, uh their professional publication. Um. And. If the school committee were looking for a superintendent. You would get Nezbec to do it at a very discounted price, if you remember.
Do you know what that's?
No, um. Two years ago, I, the current, the chair of the school committee at that time. Said to me, uh we're not gonna be here forever, so why don't you find out how much it would cost the school district? To um. Get a search done. And two years ago, Glenn Kuchar, uh the executive director of MASC gave me a number. Somewhere between three and four thousand dollars.
Well, it's surprising we won.
Hmm. Do, what do they do for that? That's where, for me, where is that itself, but maybe not.
Well, typically, they would um. Having served on committees who have done this. They would um create the advertisement that you would pay for. So that would be on top of this.
Yeah.
But they would create. They would have a contact person, so because if Joe Smith and Harriet Johnson. Were interested in applying for the job, they would have questions. Or they would need someone to send their interest in. Uh and. School committees typically don't wanna be that person, and I totally support the fact that you're not. So they, the, a member of the staff of your consulting firm. Would get all of the questions and all of the applications. They would go then through the applications. Contact the applicants with any clarifying questions they may have, for example, a very good applicant may have missed. Uh something. Um, a concrete example is. Um they may not have sent a copy of their license. That's really concrete, so somebody from the consultant would contact them.
A consultant meaning Nezbec.
Nezbec or MASC or.
Whoever we hire.
Whoever you hire.
That is.
Which, by the way, is a public decision.
Yeah.
You would, you uh, it's below the. It's both. By number of dollars below the total bid numbers and competitive bid numbers. And it's a personnel issue, so it's excluded any. So you don't have to, you may want to send out notice that you're looking for a superintendent. Um. There are those that would believe that would be the way of getting the best price and the most people involved. Uh.
But do they, like, in this process, do they, I get that they would find out somebody missed their license, but would they? Would they call and do a first round interview and go through like? A candidate that looked good but had jumped around in jobs, for example, like a red flag?
Yeah, absolutely.
They, they will do that?
Uh and then.
And then say, we think this.
Okay, so.
Bid is the best bid.
It's, it's a great clarifying question, thank you. At the applications going to your consult, there, there, there's a bifurcation. You will then decide prior to contracting with them. Whether you want them to do a first round of interviews.
Yes.
Or whether you, as the hiring agent, wanna do the first round of interviews. Obviously, if they do it, the bill will be higher.
Yeah.
If you do it, they will still be present at that first round. Typically, meeting the candidate, introducing the candidate to you because they had contact with all the candidates. If not in person, definitely by phone, uh Zoom and paper. So they would be present for that first round of interview. They would then be uh present for your deliberations in executive session, which the first round is possible. And you could ask them questions, you could say, gee, you know, I really like Janet Johnson, but I, can you find out if A B C? And then in the public round, they would also be present as your consultant.
Okay. Um. And their fees are based on total salary of whatever superintendent?
I don't know what they base their fee on, uh when I talked to Glenn, he gave me the opinion that. The hiring of a superintendent in the Hahn would be. Relatively. Quick. Rather than, uh you know.
Like Boston.
Like Boston. Uh I can tell you from my experience, when I applied here, there was only one interview.
That's it?
Yeah.
So we blew them away. Wait, it was only one interview, but how many candidates were there?
True.
Okay.
There were three individuals who were interviewed in public. Uh one eighteen. At the town hall. Because that was the only place at that time. Things were being filmed.
That makes sense.
Um, I'm just, I'm, I'm reading through this and I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
That's simple.
I, I don't know that we, like, I think we can gather this data, I mean. You know, this statement drew.
I've already produced for you the next ten years, if you remember.
And you were talking about birth rates, and I feel like our collective knowledge actually uses this.
So.
It also wasn't the thing that I thought was important.
Oh, yeah.
There were two things that I thought were most important, one is somebody who is very like had experience. Um. With handling town decision-making, right, like the whole soup to nuts. How you bring voices in, how you make sure things are posted, how you get the right clarifying questions for folks to react to with the thinking for the town session. Like, if you're on a big town meeting. You've gotta know how to gather people, how to get them set up right. Um allow them some lanes around the questions you ask, they can respond. And then also then plan an open session where they can say whatever they want, listen, right?
Very, very similar to what the Hahn Housing Committee is doing to you, so they have, they have a contract with the MAC. And they're guiding the town in the Hahn through the whole process. And then they've been super helpful in terms of, you know, getting the community together, questions to ask, um we need something similar, yet I don't know. Who.
Who?
Is the organization that's guiding the housing specifically about housing? Yeah, that's what I thought.
The other reason I do think it's important to have somebody who is, has done this maybe with education change because. There is a, this isn't just broad change for our school system. There is a line of questioning that is coming up, which is what is best to do about our real schools, like beyond the numbers. It is bubbled up this feeling of worry that has feels like it has been longstanding. Of are we robbing our sixth grade, this is a particular sixth grade, I think, I hear it more.
Yeah.
Um of the experience of um making friends and having social connections. At Swamp Scott Middle School, right, like, uh is this, is, is this the right thing, you know? And, and academics as well, that's, it feels, in my own individual hearing, academics has come off a little bit second to that, but. But in that, I, that could be just me, but those two things definitely have been coming up. Um and it, you know, so it's not just opening the bonds, it's all, it's, it's a lot about that, so if there is. A, a group that could help us think about this from a, a process standpoint, but all, and handle all the details, let's keep that down. But also. I have some um education thinkers um to help give information to guide. You know, public opinion and also give information to us as we make one of the most important decisions for it.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, in, in talking about this. Time of the long-term goal and the, the, the long-term success of the school. Is to have. An expert come in really and present some education plans to say, this is, here's, here's what works when you're looking at. Um, a multi, you know, a blended classroom and, you know, um. And, and how could a small population survive?
Yep.
And, and have the kids thrive. Um, you know, and I think. A lot of why people love this school is because of the community experience that the kids really have, and I think. You know, for U C, and you really built that a lot, you know, um. You know, so I think that there's just so many things. To consider. Um. To, to really help this school thrive. Um. As, as for everybody that's involved in this wonderful community. Am I, we're asking if other, there, like, if we could search if other school districts have recently had similar change? And how would it have to look?
And how would it have to look?
It's smaller, a smaller pool, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're like, what's Martha's been your town, what, what do they do, you know, or Western Mass? There's lots of little towns up there.
They, I mean, they regional.
They regionalized, yeah.
But, I, I think.
So Madam Chair, what I hear is you want me to expand my search for consultant. And including going back to Nezbec and saying. Um, this isn't what we want.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, by the way, I already told them, but. I'm the wallflower, as you know, but I will, I would tell them again.
Okay, so I think we're all in agreement that that's not implied. So we need to vote on it? We're not the vote on projecting proposals, but not on the exciting. Okay, so moving on to other committee business, is there anything else that we need to discuss?
I don't.
Um. I don't, I, are there any announcements? Nothing.
Uh just a reminder for the sixth grade parents or the current sixth grade families. That will be having their seventh graders go to the middle school, it's a day. That we are attending the middle school Thursday evening for our parents' uh session.
Nice, thank Leanna.
Yeah, just a reminder, yep.
And. Can I have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-need personnel. Superintendent, not to reconvene into an open session. I'll say the motion they've been saying.
On paper?
Uh, I.
So thank you everyone.
Eight forty-five.
Eight forty-five PM concludes this meeting.
I'm gonna make a motion to go to the bathroom.
You didn't even call us.
I did.
I'm James. Thank you, Mr. Grant Johnson. I'll put this one in notes. Leanna?
Yes.
You have a, an email from me with the document I'm distributing.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm not there, you guys, I ended up getting a fever.
No, Leanna, I hope you're feeling better.
I feel crappy, but I can't believe that this, like, I feel like so weird, I feel like a kid, two weeks ago I didn't come, and now I'm like, is this a joke? I can't believe I'm sick.
If you do this during our next meeting, I'm gonna seriously.
I know, right, you're like, I don't know about this one.
If this is the host, I'm just trying to close the, um. So that nobody else can join, since we're.
Oh, you wanna put this?
Cause we're gonna keep the meeting on because we're, but because we're in executive session.
Wanna activate a, um.
Like a waiting room.
Yeah.
But it says that I'm not the host, like, then who is the host?
Right there.
I know, but that's us.
I'm the host.
I am the host.
Yeah.
Oh, now you have to log in, okay.
Just gonna leave it.
All right, thanks, I'm with that.
I'll just keep an eye on it, Leanna, can you help me keep an eye that nobody is gonna join the meeting? I just don't want somebody to.
Yes, I will.
I'm gonna stay. Oh, yeah, Tony has ten.
Oh, oh.
Just a little. I know briefly, I guess.
I'm, uh, I think we're talking about Tony and Leo.
You are too, yeah, but I was talking to Leo. My end.
It's blaming that this is a meeting in public, in other public.
I.
And, and then the hard thing is that, like, Sean pointed out at the end of the meeting, that it creates frustration if we're answering some question.
And not, and not.
And letting some people talk out of order and have others, like, I do have that. But, but I'm not gonna allow to continue.
No, no, yeah.
If I, what I do.
Time, so.
Like when the person said, I'm a special education. I wanted to jump up. What I do is I write.
Yes.
I write, and then if an opportunity comes up, which came up later.
Mm-hmm.
People say something.
But you do feel like when we don't have a time of community correspondence. And then we get out of practice and we forget that this is what we should be doing.
We haven't had any, oh, you're.
Well, I mean, there's little, but you don't need.
Yeah.
At the beginning, and which one. It becomes a conversation, and. Oh, and, and to that point, and you even. Past school committee members have made comments, but it's not community correspondence, like, it's just. You just really wanna say something, you know, and it's really hard.
Humiliation nature.
It is, it is, you know, but it's rules for a reason, and like, you know, because then you get that, and you know.
We're all seven.
What's up?
We're all seven.
Yeah, I'm just gonna keep that, just keep it on, cause I'm gonna.
It'll pop up real fast.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll keep an eye on it, in fact, I noticed, it looks like Glenn past, wait, we're still recording, you guys.
Oh, that's just, I feel we had a recording.
It looks like Glenn Pastor tried to join the meeting, but then he left, I don't know, he was only on for a second.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, like, I saw his face from his picture pop on, but then he left.
How do you, it's to have our discussion.
Yes, and we.
We're still recording.
Um.
It's up there. Oh, yeah, you're right, but I. It's not doing anything. Oh, there it is.
You know.
Nah, it's just meetings.
Yeah. It was my fault for starting, I'm sorry. Actually, I didn't, sorry.
It is recording.
So, I still haven't engaged with her, I just, I. Was trying to be temporarily reactive to being on the phone.
And I wasn't encouraging using the chat, the chat function, she actually put her name and her address, so I read it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the other thing that can sometimes get out of people.
Yeah, I think it's setting, I think you were.
You wanna come, is there some place we can put, like, wanna come?
It's always the thing, like, announcing it by the party, you can work on it.
That's for real, yeah.
Just as a reminder.
Yeah. And we're not trying to be.
Yeah, just don't, don't shut down. No, I'm not. Now you're in a different menu, so it's not gonna be, it's gonna be back on Zoom, you gotta go on Zoom again, because this menu will change, go to meeting, I think it's.
You're sitting here cringing. You probably know, but like, I'm not, like, the question I have to answer right away. I thought you were continuing. He didn't want me to keep on saying, like. And you didn't. I, oh, really, I.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, dude. I was still.
You go down.
I got it, oh, good.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, no, that stopped video.
He went to clarify with us to stop. And I'll take my phone and stop by.
Because, because I think that the, I think that.
Navigation map, yeah, it is settings, go to the recording tab.
Meetings in public.
Uh, click the automatic recording toggle to the same.
But people that don't go to these kinds of meetings don't get it.
Right.
You know.
And then Patty asked. Two times, said, I'm almost gonna put, and then said, and left one word, like, it's Patty, you're, you left every opportunity in the world to comment.
So.
So Mary, who seems like a very intelligent woman, wants to comment, she can comment. You know, she was caught up in one moment, and I was too, and like, I get it, but, yeah.
We, we do want to be.
We do. Yeah. Yeah, and it's about, you know, that, that, but even if I believe it, so, yeah, that's what we really want.
Well, no, it's even better. What's it called?
How do I stop my computer screen from recording? How do we, try, we're just trying to stop the recording right now.
Glad you're all being recorded, yeah, great.
The only way to stop recording is press control and under keyboard.
We made it short. So, but. Forty-five. Yes. Chop it in forty-five as well.
Let's start a new session. But can we discuss, it's not on the agenda. What else?
What's on, well, what is on the agenda?
Are we still being recorded, Tony?
Uh, yep.
Right. I'm gonna wait.
I'm clicking on recording, but nothing's happening.
Why don't we?
It changed, Chris. That sounds. Yeah.
I think that's what we did the last time.
After recording has been started, click pause or stop recording at the bottom. Doesn't say pause or stop recording. Yeah. When the recording is paused. To Zoom recording, click and resume.
I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, sure.
I don't know.
Yeah, but.
During a Zoom recording. Stop, pause. Yeah.
What if you guys left and came back?
Yeah, it sounds like that's what we should do.
Okay, I can log back on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um. It automatically records in, in the. Google, I did a different meeting. So it didn't have the automatic, you know, automatic thing.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, sure, um. Leanna, I'm gonna send you another link, okay?
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, sorry about this.
It's okay.
We think it's set up automatically at town hall.
I don't remember. A little bird. And sadly, you know. Who doesn't?
All right.
I'm in a lobby with a charge person, she's just. I did, I did, I did it. It's like. And I do a joke, but I, I.
No, no, no. Like I said.
In the, it's, I know a bad night to make.
Right.
You shouldn't do that.
Yeah, well, it has to be.
I know, that's crazy. And you need this for free, like. Wait. Right. Thank you for criticizing, but. Waiting us with your presence to blow up something. You're just singing, and then you stop up, thank you for stopping up.
I'm sorry.